This meeting started at two thirty with beautiful. I'd like to make, put in a motion to, uh, let Mr. Donnie Lewis, the regulars, lead him today. I make that motion to, uh, Don Lewis, I, so it's ten. I'd like, uh...
And before we get started, I just address basically the question of meeting times. Uh, the, the meeting times, and I'm sorry, I wanted to get a press release done on this here before I go there, but I've had people since seven thirty this morning. Uh, is basically the regular meeting is scheduled at ten AM and pursuant to the ordinance each month on the fourth Tuesday. So pursuant to that, I think back, I had written a pen and advised the court members, which I will release back in, uh, so last county attorney's meeting, I did, I had it right here. I apologize. Basically addressing, on May the fifteenth, I believe, addressing the meeting time. And I, that was to all, yeah, I've got it here. That was to all the, of the court, basically, that it was my opinion that an adjustment issue that he wanted to move the meeting to six thirty. It's my opinion that it's basically a matter of ordinance until the ordinance is adjusted, it's at ten o'clock. And, um, that has not been done as of this point. So I assume there'll be another, but the meeting has been noticed for six thirty, which does create a problem, but it's actually, this is the general meeting, so it's actually an ordinance. Also, I've obtained, just to buttress that, Kako's opinion, that basically it has to be at the time of the said ordinance. Okay? So I will try to do a writing on that, but also the people, that's my opinion, my opinion only, but I would, that's great.
Brendan, if you want to hear a news on that, I'll do it.
Yeah, it's fine. I know, probably, so whatever. I just want to address that because I know it's a, a major issue. I'll address it this evening, again, at twelve, if, if need be. But it's my understanding that, uh, in communication with Judge, just a few moments ago, before I came over here, uh, probably about five until ten, is that he feels that the meeting should be at six thirty, if he will attempt to maybe conduct one at that time tonight. Okay? Uh, at this point, it appears you have a quorum though, so. Brother John, I'd like you to place your prayer for the Lord.
Dear John, we come to you this morning and thank you that you love all of us. And Lord, we sure don't know what to do. Many times, the Bible says that if we lack wisdom to call upon you, that your very presence will help no matter what's going on. We thank you for the magistrates, others that are here today. We just pray that the judge and magistrates could get together in this county ruling in the right direction. And we love you today, Lord, and we love everybody here, and that's what keeps us going. In Jesus' name and everybody's sin.
Amen. Praise your Jesus, who is the light of the United States of America, and who is the republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we need to do, so we get started here, we, uh, Chris Frye, he takes our minutes. He's, uh, working the accident of his habits. So this time, I entertain a motion to let Crystal Deaton, uh, take the minutes this week.
Motion.
Say. All in favor? Uh, I, I, I have a motion carried. Uh, first thing I need to do is make a motion, or entertain a motion to amend the agenda by combining, uh, the ten o'clock agenda and also the six thirty agenda and adding a new item, C, uh, which is to appoint Mitch Smith as a new treasurer effective July first, two thousand nineteen. I entertain that motion?
Motion. Say. For a four-year term.
Well, we, also wait to reconsider.
Well, are you, are you just moving to amend the agenda at this time?
Right. Right. I entertain that motion.
Motion. Say.
All in favor? Uh, uh, I have a motion carried.
Then you should make a motion to adopt, uh, any of the agenda.
Make most adopted agenda. Both to Zenas.
Motion. Say.
You have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Uh, uh, I have a motion carried. Uh, actually, consideration, it were approved to appoint Mitch Smith as Breithick County Treasurer for a four-year term beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, at a salary of fifty thousand dollars, as classification as salary exempt. Uh, we, we, uh, we, we passed this motion back in April, in the April meeting, but for whatever reason, Judge Ogle sought to dove out, so to please him and everybody, uh, involved, we're doing this today. So I see, which is consideration for approval of Mitch Smith as Breithick County Treasurer. Read again.
I'll make that motion.
Let me read it again and make sure, sorry. Considerates for approval to appoint Mitch Smith as Breithick County Treasurer for a four-year term beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, at a salary of fifty thousand dollars, and a classification as salary exempt.
Motion. Say.
All in favor? Uh, uh, I have a motion carried. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the following, April first, two thousand nineteen special meeting, April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen special meeting, April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen public hearing, regular meeting, May third, two thousand nineteen special meeting, May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen special meeting, May twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen special meeting, May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen public hearing, regular meeting, May the twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen emergency meeting, May the thirty-first, two thousand nineteen special meeting, June the tenth, two thousand nineteen special meeting, and June the twentieth, two thousand nineteen special meeting. Entertain a motion?
Motion. Say.
All in favor? Uh, I, I vote, I, I have a motion carried. Is, uh...
I just talked to him, he was pulling out the door, so we want to go the next one, one way or the other.
Wait on C. Is he?
He said, we're pulling down the door. I mean, if you want to go to the next item, you can come back here.
What, item E? Are we waiting on Frank Allen? Item E, consideration of approval of a fiscal court order pertaining authorized signers and inquiries on all accounts of the fiscal court, this pertaining to the treasurer. I entertain that motion?
Donnie, probably better than trying to store, what grade you?
I didn't read that. What? What you reading?
Or, or is it that?
Send them the papers.
Yeah.
Right. I'm reading.
Oh. There you are. You were told your, uh, maybe, sir?
We'll get back to item E. Item E, it's sworn in Mitch Smith as county treasurer by the arm of Frank Allen, pledging chief circuit judge.
Let's see, this is right here. Okay, if you raise your right hand, and repeat after me, Bill. Okay. I state your name.
I, Mitch Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability.
The office of Breithick County Treasurer.
The office of Breithick County Treasurer.
According to law.
According to law.
Now do solemnly swear or affirm.
And I do solemnly swear and affirm.
But since the adoption of the present constitution.
Since the adoption of the present constitution.
I being a citizen of this state.
I being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons.
Within this state nor out of it.
Within this state or out of it.
Nor have I sent or accepted a challenge.
Nor have I sent or accepted a challenge.
Fight a duel with deadly weapons.
To fight a duel with deadly weapons.
Nor have I acted as second.
Nor have I acted as second.
In carrying a challenge.
In carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted any person.
Nor aided or assisted any person.
Thus offended, so help me God.
Thus offended, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Okay. Let's leave your body.
Thank you, Judge.
You all have a good day. See you. Okay.
Okay, so. This is called item E. Consideration of approval of a fiscal court order handing authorized signers and inquiries on all accounts of the fiscal court, and the order is as follows. An order handed to authorized signers and inquiries on all accounts of the fiscal court. Whereas the Breithick County Fiscal Court has multiple checking accounts at Citizen Bank and Trust Company of Jackson for the purpose of transacting county business, and as whereas KRS sixty-eight point oh-two-oh, paragraph one mandates that the county treasurer must sign all warrants for the payment of funds from the county treasurer, and whereas Charlotte Bailey Turner, as Breithick County Treasurer, will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas Kenneth Mitchell Smith, Mitch Smith, as duly, was duly appointed by a majority of the fiscal court as county treasurer effective July the first, two thousand nineteen. Were it therefore ordered that Kenneth Mitchell Smith shall be added as an authorized co-signer and enquirer effective July first, two thousand nineteen, on all accounts at the Citizen Bank and Trust Company of Jackson, belonging to the Breithick County Fiscal Court, and or tied to federal EIN six-one dash six-zero-zero-zero eight-three-one, and it further ordered that Charlotte Bailey shall be removed as an authorized co-signer and enquirer, order effective July the first, two thousand nineteen, on all accounts at the Citizen Bank and Trust Company of Jackson, belonging to the Breithick County Fiscal Court and or tied to federal EIN number six-one dash six-zero-zero-zero eight-three-one, and be it further ordered that the Citizen Bank and Trust Company of Jackson shall not add or remove any individual as an authorized co-signer or enquirer on any account belonging to the Breithick County Fiscal Court and or tied to federal EIN number six-one dash six-zero-zero-zero eight-three-one, unless first presented by an executive order by a majority of the Breithick County Fiscal Court. And this is going, gets it, so order, state June, two thousand nineteen, twenty-fifth. I entertain a motion?
Motion.
Say. All in favor? Uh, uh, I, I have a motion carried. Item M, consideration of approval to assign office space for the county treasurer and other employees, including you, Chris, for duration of the final of the four-year term pursuant to KRS six-seven-one-one-three-oh. Brendan, do you have any meaning?
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen the order. I have read sixty-seven-one, but there's not. Okay. I know, I received an email that, that had some issues with it, that I would have recommended that I'd be having a, a longer look, taking that step, and for sure, with some case law documents out there that I haven't been able to read. Uh, the sixty-seven-one-thirty, I think, is what the fiscal court's relying upon to do this. Um, and basically, that statement is that the fiscal court, Beach County, shall be responsible for maintenance and operation of office, building, grounds, and other properties. Uh, I can dispatch the record that the magistrates are, that you three are relying upon that statute to make assignments of office space in the courthouse. The judge has informed me that he does not think that is solid, citing two other statutes, which I will, I will have at this point in time to address. But, uh, you know, that is an issue. I know that Kako, Rich Ornstein had applied to me, he thought, under the first two sentences here, that the fiscal court actually set the, uh, the space and usage of the courthouse, but I assume that will be an issue that will be part of the declaratory judgment action that will have to be filed, which I, I do not, from my understanding, I don't know if Judge will honor your quote at this point in time, because basically, this statute says that the fiscal court is responsible, and the county judge shall execute the policies of the fiscal court regarding buildings, grounds, and other properties. And I haven't, uh, I know the judge, again, asserts that under his executive privilege, he can assign office spots in the, in the courthouse. So that's the two sides of it at this point in time.
I think also, Brendan, another issue is that, uh, security reasons, the duties of the treasurer, it would be very difficult to be conducted in another location inside the courthouse. I think we've had some discussion on that.
And just for record, for everybody's knowledge, I, I advise the fiscal court and the judge as well, okay? So I'm advising both the same thing, straight up and down. That's the reason I present both sides here, and that if, if the, this, this court takes action, and they take different action, we'll have to submit that for a really long, okay?
Okay. Try to say it again, I'm a little spotty. I entertain a motion?
Motion.
Consideration, item L, consideration of approval to assign office space for the county treasurer and other employees for the duration of this four-year term pursuant to KRS six-seven point one-three-zero.
Sign your motion to assign the courthouse.
That's a space of high work, which brings...
Okay. County treasurer's in the current position? Well, that's right. Office space that is currently off the path. But Charlotte Bailey is treasurer of the town. I make a motion here.
Well, I've been, I, I'm gonna say something. I've been with the county almost twenty-six years. Ever since I started working for the county, been with the county, where Miss Charlotte Bailey's office is at, it's where it's always been since I've worked for the county. So I'm, I, I make a motion, we'll just keep it right there. My son.
Finance officer?
Yes.
Nine-one coordinator?
Yes.
And insurance, health insurance coordinator? Make motion? Right.
Yeah.
Motion. I say, say. All in favor?
Uh, uh.
I say.
Can I say something before you move on?
Okay.
Just to let everybody know why this is even being brought up. About a week ago, I was sent working by the judge that effective seven, one of the trade shops with the county road department, along with where the finance officer is now. And in the last thirty-five, forty years that I've been able to research, it's never been anywhere but where he is now. So that's why this is an issue.
Motion carried. Item G, discussing possible action concerning personnel. Uh, this relates to the incident on May eighth, two thousand nineteen, that Crystal Deaton was, uh, written up by a county judge executive on six different counts. Uh, then again, yesterday, I was a witness to that, uh, incident, and really would, I didn't like what I saw, but whatever. So, Miss Deaton, in, in my presence, she asked, uh, County Judge, what was, what was the write-up? And I don't know about Chris, but I never forget what he, uh, what it was. You, Chris?
We can't, please, I'm not ready to explain it anymore.
I just don't know the, the issue there. That being said, I mean, uh, I don't know, I mean, Chris Deaton was hard, there's, there's three positions, I guess, reiterate before, on May, I mean, on January the seventh, those three positions, which is financial officer, health insurance coordinator, and nine-one-one coordinator, uh, according to, uh, KRS six-seven point seven-ten, uh, paragraph seven, it said with the, with the approval of the fiscal court, county judge hereby appoints upon individuals to hold these positions. That being said, uh, county judge, in his authority, cannot remove anybody without the approval of the fiscal court. He has fit for two positions. Uh, therefore, that being said, like I said, I don't think county judge, that might be as part of the, part of the judgment that Brendan was speaking about earlier, but, uh, I don't think he has authority to, to take any position away from any employee without the approval, like I said. So I entertain a motion to, uh, reinstate Crystal Deaton in those three positions this time.
Motion.
Say. Say. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, I have a motion carried. Also, uh, we had a, uh, meeting out in the hallway, I know somebody there, was there during that meeting, when the courtroom's locked, so we, we had a meeting anyway, in the hallway, the judge, for whatever reason, locked the courtroom. And then he also called the law enforcement to have us removed. Uh, our Sheriff, John Holland, which has jurisdiction, the court, this is a county building, uh, he let us go ahead and have a meeting in, in the hallway. And I think Brendan was present there too, or county attorney. He stated at the beginning of the meeting that it was a legal meeting, and what action we took was legal. The judge is not recognizing. Uh, we gave Jamie Holbrook, Kenneth Patrick, and Kenneth Ray Patrick, uh, a raise. They've yet to receive that raise.
Jackie Ray.
Jackie Ray.
Jackie Ray.
Jackie Ray, I'm sorry. Uh, to my knowledge, they have never been paid, left. And another thing, to my knowledge, the judge is not, has not rejected or filed anything legally on that meeting, while they haven't been paid, I don't know. Uh, and when we did that, we left out a, a person, which is Kenneth Ray Watts, he's a mechanic, Breithick County mechanic. So I entertain a motion, let these three and four weeks receive their raises. Uh, Ray Patrick, two dollars, Jamie Holbrook, two dollars, and Kenneth Ray Watts, one dollar per hour. Make the next paper.
Motion, say.
All in favor? Uh, uh, I have a motion carried. Yeah. Item H, consideration of approval to order IP specialist Matthew Hudson to release the May two thousand nineteen audit trail detail logs to county magistrates no later than twelve PM today, June the twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, I think Matthew is probably, would be unable today because his wife's sick in the hospital, so whenever those, he can get, get those boards, uh, I entertain that motion?
Motion. Say.
All in favor? Uh, I have a motion carried.
And, and I'll say on that one as well, guys, that Judge, had informed me that he objected to those big rules, based upon the fact that it was a, uh, record of the county judge's office, so I'm just saying that for the record. Basically, this is a request you can send to him for that, to release those records instead of directly to Mr. Hudson.
We have to file open records.
Wes, I think I've managed to do that one time before, if I recall correctly, and I could be incorrect on that. That, that, there should be probably an open records request filed directly to the judge for those, and they go through that process, if he does not turn it over. If, if he wishes to dig supplies within the three days, and if not, then there's a process you go through to appeal any open records situation, under the statute.
We as members of the fiscal court, I, I don't know why county judge failed to give us any records.
And I understand, I understand. And that, and that's why I think you should follow that process, do that. That way, there's a, there's a set procedure set out to do all that, certainly. So, yeah. With, with that, I would just say, I would, uh, you know, I don't know as, as Matthew, I think he's an employee of, of the court, but through the judge's office, I would think that it's the judge's job to give you those, that, that he should be the correct person to request it instead of Mr. Hudson to put him in that position.
Okay. Okay. We move on. Kevin, Sam, uh, we gave him an increase on his pay. I don't know exactly what the date was, I think he received one, one check, Kevin?
I received one check, and then he asked for it back, and then I haven't received any other. I went from a hundred dollars a month to three to zero. And also, I'd like some kind of a clarification, because this is the legal meeting at ten o'clock. The judge sent me an angry text this morning, wanting to know why I had a ten o'clock meeting posted on the county's Facebook page, that the meeting was at six thirty, and that was the only meeting that should be posted. You know, I mean, y'all appointed me as the fiscal court to be the fiscal court videographer. The judge sent me a letter that he is my boss, that he is the only one that can tell me who, what to put on Facebook, what not to, no matter what you all voted for, he's the director. I just want something clear. I'm tired of getting angry texts every time I put a video up on Facebook. Put it up, take it down, put it up, take it down. I don't know what to do, you know? I'm not even getting paid right now. Do I need to be back here at six thirty tonight to film the non-meeting, or the second? I mean, somebody tell me what to do, please. I'm tired of getting in trouble with the judge. Supposedly, I've got a write-up waiting on me, I haven't received it yet, but that's what I hear is in the works. He told me to come over this morning, and then he got mad and told me not to, to...
I would be here at six thirty. I wouldn't.
Okay. But I, you know, I mean, I'm the videographer, like I said, this is, you know, some, I just, I need something to just state, you know, what goes on, I mean, it's public, you know, and like I said, the majority of the fiscal court voted for me to do this. Who do I listen to? I mean, really? I, you know, I need something, because this is getting ridiculous. You know, I post the meeting on the county Facebook page that it was at ten o'clock, like the admin code says, then the judge tells me, no, my agenda is the right agenda, you, you post it. The meeting's at six thirty, not ten, you know? I mean, and then, like I said, where's my check? I'm not even getting any check now.
So, uh, is right, how much money does fiscal court owe you?
Three hundred dollars. I didn't even get the hundred dollar check this time. Jeff said that I would continue to receive the hundred dollars until all the, the hallway meeting was contested, but I haven't even got the hundred dollar check this month.
I don't think he's contested legally, Brendan.
Well, there have to be things filed. I, I, the same as I've asked you for your list of items to put into judgment, to put in the, uh, surface court action, um, I have not received that from, from here, Mr. Campbell at this point in time.
I mean, it seems to me that there's a deliberate attempt to confuse the public as to win the be here, you know? I mean, it seems to me that there's a deliberate attempt to confuse the public as to when to be here, you know?
And our body of mind is that I'm going to have the issue. I mean, it's going to be the issue whether the May 16 meeting was valid or not, the rule of violence that the court ruled on. You know, we can do this through an attorney general opinion on all these issues if we wish, but it probably would take much longer to do that. So, you guys have corrected me to get that done. We haven't yet for the fact that I was, I asked both sides for the list of issues they would like to be addressed. And I have this side. I do not have the other side yet, but we'll try to get that filed for if we can as quickly as we can. Just a lot of work.
With that being said, I entertain a motion to pay Calum $300 that's owed him.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, Jim.
Just to go back to your motion on the thing with Mr. Hudson. Do you want to change that as far as he's concerned?
The wording?
Yeah, because like I say, I, and just to just look after Mr. Hudson, because he's come and talked to me a couple of times about it.
Weeks.
Exactly. And I think probably those are records of the County Judge's office. So, then I think the judge is the appropriate person to turn those over instead of just the contractor. I mean, tell me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
But I think the judge is the one that you should request to turn over those records.
Okay, so we'll redo item H, rewording. Consideration of approval to order County Judge Executive, Judge Nolan, to release the May 2019 audit trail detail logs to the County Magisters no later than 12:00 PM today, June 25, 2019. I entertain that motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye, I'd have most carried.
And for the record, so we're going to keep the minutes as close as we can on these non-attended meetings for both sides, is basically you want to withdraw the one on Matthew Craig. Is that, is that motion amended to take Mr. Hudson out?
Amend the motion. Take Mr. Hudson out and add Judge Executive, Judge Nolan.
So, just to me?
Well, I'd have Ray remake that motion amended to remake that motion.
I make that motion amend.
Second. Mr. Hudson. All in favor? Aye, aye, I'd have most carried. I, consideration of approval to issue payment immediately for all claims submitted by the resident county advocate. Bobby has gave us, said the claim, so I entertain a motion.
I heard that in the invoice numbers, so I should have them down and I may make no question.
And you may ask a question about that. I go get into this legal paper, I don't remember anything like that. But like, what are the invoices for?
They were for advertisements for people with masters around. The nameplates that the judge ordered for all the masters himself. He ordered some desk nameplates for some other employees. FEMA invoices that were sent us, we ran.
So, and just for clarification, are you advertising in both papers? The meetings, stuff like that, which are how they do it? And this is bills for that, correct?
There goes the back. February, is it? Beep boop. Right, February.
Because you know, without getting into the whole contest issue about legal paper and all that sort of stuff, I mean, they, you need to assume you guys are going to approve this anyway. But you need to look at that, that issue, not what do you guys do as much, do? What are the legal bills that are owed?
Well, I was some legal bills from the beginning of the year that he didn't approve to pay. So, I don't think you could pay one or another.
The wooden things and stuff like that. When you get down to that advertising issue about which paper it should be in, fiscal court wants to do it in both papers. But, you know, I haven't been around, I assume it's time still legal paper. Is it?
I agree. It's about a week in my, I don't know what the hell I do. You know, they are, by statute.
Yeah, I just want to make sure as far as the claims are.
For clarification for me, when I come in, if the Jackson House is the legal paper, as long as, if they desire, as long as it's advertising that paper, maybe not so easily advertised if it is. I mean, is there anything stopping them from doing that?
Well, you have to run it in the paper of largest circulation for legal paper. As far as doing the, as far as advertising in both papers, that's up to the fiscal court. They think that's a valid use of public funds. And I'll just, I'll just put it that way. You know, and that's, you know, if they have, that's something for you guys as legislators to determine. It has to go in the paper of the largest circulation, no matter what. What you do on top of that otherwise is up to the fiscal court.
And I want to add to that, for several years, we were the legal paper. But it wasn't this administration. But they didn't run anything with us. So, for a timeframe, they did and we had no problem. They wanted to know if they could run it both, even though we were the legal paper and I had no problem with that. Because, I mean, I wouldn't go with a texture or anything. Because the more you get to word it out, the more bids you get, you know?
Well, I mean, that would be, if you do bids and things on the other side, that's going to be in the fiscal court's purview, whether all you want to advertise in. Because I know we've advertised bids in Earl Leader and certain other papers in the past. And to be, you know, fairness to the whole thing is we, it depends on how large you want some as far as the bid's concerned. But actual notices of meetings, you have those lines in all bids. You have, by statute, you have to go, in the ditch which case, you have to go with the paper of the largest circulation. And yet, you're supposed to make that determination once every four years. Is that right, there's a four by?
Once every year, October.
I haven't looked at that statute.
October, it's in here. Yeah, we do that statement ownership in October each year.
So, just take that for the record.
Item J. Consideration of approval to order the County Treasurer to issue payment immediately to Millipore Insurance Company in the amount of $1,708.99 for a County Treasurer bond.
That amount's actually different. Dominic, that was there if you want. Leave that name off.
$1,975?
Yeah.
Okay, we change it to $1,975. I'm going to get a vote here. Change it to, change the amount from $1,708.99 to $1,975.
Yeah, motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye, I'd have most carried.
Did y'all vote on Harry Enboys? I know you made a motion in the second, I don't know if you voted.
I don't know. Okay. Moving on to the 6:30 agenda. Item A. Consideration of approval to pay Hampton Inn in the amount of $417 for bid to Hudson and George Ridge for mandatory corner training.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? I'd have most carried. Item B. Consideration for approval for financial statement and appropriation revenue and admission report. I entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? I'd have most carried. Item C. Consideration for approval for budget transfers.
Motion, second.
Second. All in favor? Aye, aye, I'd have most carried. Item D. Consideration for approval for inter fund transfers. I entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? I'd have most carried.
Well, I have a few questions. I wonder what I'd say. You did second that much.
Item E. Consideration for approval for legal bills. I know we used to, when we listed, consideration for approval of claims, part of the claims, this is what I have. And Brendan has, has given his opinion on the wording of the legal bills. I mean, that's, to me, it's found a situation where there's illegal bills. County things. And also, I think we need to look, we've got some things to get questioned about on claims. Our treasurer's not here at this time, but the question I would have is, she's already, she's got the checks laid out for the claims before they've been approved. But she's not here. No, the treasurer's here for lunch. I have to see. I think we need to just say what we want to approve. We should be easier on the bank list. You guys have anything to add? We've got some claims on there that need to pay. Make the motion, go ahead. What claims you want to pay? You want to read them off? Read them off, ones you want to pay? Got it.
So, I'll just make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
What's your motion?
Please go, please.
These are the claims that we're reading off. You should read off.
Oh, you're going to, okay. Yeah, just make sure, but you're not going to play them all, make sure you listen specifically.
Rethink County PVA. It's count number 01, Bible 30367. From the out. 510475. Senior citizens, program support. $3,000. Yeah. And full income health insurance.
Now, is that to the Rethink County Bureau of Law?
The Rethink County Bureau. Health. 823608.
823608, that's all.
That's enough, just one.
Yeah, just give me the grand sum.
7532.
$7232, favor?
Right. Dale, what about the, what, uh, a few, you know, $10,000?
You just buy that in life, Mike.
I can do it.
Yeah, you can. That's all.
Yeah, I ain't paying, you ain't paying that, I have to run it all the way back. Okay, all right. That's some computer repair. Two. Two things. Two invoices, invoice 1065, 1075.
What's your math?
3483.
$3,004.98.
Right. Final fee, Rethink County Bureau.
Isn't made up to the Rethink Circuit Department?
Yeah. I ask one of those. We go approval of the late $220.
Oh, yeah, you didn't put that one down, right? So, we don't need to.
Right. Miss one that Walter Service Center. I cherish it, you got two. There's one, there's another one, there we go.
All the walkers come.
All right. We've got only two different embosses. Just say. I have a say. Sorry. One on the back. Right here, the first one is.
Just give me the, what is the number, 11348?
That's what I see from Walter. Right here, one, one thirteen or something. You have another one.
One thirteen forty. You want the number of this?
113.
And it's got your slash from the most start now?
Right. One of them's 11348.
Just give me the, what is the number, 11348?
You got two different embosses, yeah. And the other was.
I am, right.
And the other one is 16486.
So, 11348 plus 16486.
Yes, ma'am. We had a question on this, and I don't shortage that charity. It's due with the Judicial Center repairs, somebody named Deborah KUEMBA. $880.
No, we have a bad maintenance contract on the Judicial Center.
Bill $880.
So, Deborah?
Deborah comes right up, mail her in and come.
I would have heard that. I always don't like to say, you can't search.
You got the other Walter there. Yeah. Rethink Church clerk.
You take that to last.
Yes, ma'am.
I think so, wait Brandon. Didn't Bruce pick up the 221 for the driver?
I understand it, yeah. I understand that's good, Bob.
So, is that it? No. We got, oh, that insurance cover, Sherry Pitts. Sherry Pitts, L M. It's 35473.
That's actually pre- retired.
Yeah, that's a standing order.
That's a standing process. That's pre- retired.
Okay, you got, we got the next one to lead the senior citizen, smart, the often, often.
That's a standing order. You're probably looking at the pre-approved claims as well.
I am.
That's the, that's the standing order.
So, everything in there be, be okay. I guess we, we just want to make sure.
She actually got some honor, you know, I told you the family.
No, 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 the book of the papers thought of standing orders.
It's on there, no.
It is on there.
No, it's on the standing order. Anything of prior retirement, and actually health insurance is standing order.
Utilities.
And utilities.
Well, we just want to give them what we, make sure they get paid. Or you add that?
Yeah. Now, that's a pre-approved, right?
Right, yes. Well, I'm saying, so, pre-approved.
So, let's go ahead and finish the motion on the regular claims list. And then make some pre-approved.
Okay, I make that motion.
So, Bill, sorry, you said. So, you want to take it?
You got, I made the motion. Second for the regular claims list.
Bill, sorry, you said.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
All, all in favor? Aye, aye, I'd have most carried.
Now, you can make a pre-approved.
Have you got a pre-approved here?
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, one was Rethink County Senior Citizen. One Lee Mar, Sherry Pitts, sale insurance. Mudcap Construction FEMA project at Wolf Creek, Site 1. Mudcap Construction FEMA project, Site 2.
Okay, give me the amount of the senior citizens.
It was senior, 1340.
Okay, and what's the amount on the Mudcap?
The first one's $21,000. Site 1, the second one was 2640. I got another one, Mudcap Construction FEMA. Uh, got another one, Mudcap Construction, FEMA, Ram Bottom, seventeen one twenty three seventy five. And G and, G and W Construction Company. Ready?
Aye.
Uh, one fifteen seven forty six ninety three.
One fifteen four?
Uh, one fifteen seven forty six ninety three. And then we got next to the engineering on there. It's ten thousand fifty six dollars and three cents.
Ten thousand fifty six all three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's it, folks.
B three electric.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is it?
Twenty three four sixty five.
I didn't understand the line.
B three electric.
And how much is it?
Twenty three four sixty five.
What even?
Yeah.
Now, who was the one that was sorry his insurance is made out to him?
You said, he has a Bridge County clerk.
How much is her?
Uh, three fifty four seventy three.
Okay.
That's it, folks.
Uh, Bridge County senior citizens, Mudcap Construction, G and W Construction, and engineer, B three electric, and Bridge County clerk.
You got the judge on there too, or three, ninety eight eighty?
To Bridge County clerk?
Yeah.
Ninety eight ninety?
Yeah, yes.
It's all pre-approved.
Yeah.
Okay, motion, uh?
Right, more. One's listed pre-approved, pre-approved claims.
Man, you all do your last day story, good pipe. All of those heads.
Well, everything on here, then, the check has already been made out, most everything is on here on both of them. Before we get to those.
Motion, right, so, yes.
All the favor. I, I, I'd have a motion carried. You're just loud, right, sir? Or just not, or is that? Just loud, right, now?
I want, I want one, you got, we, I want to bring the one to agree it out.
Right.
Is that all under?
Right.
Funds?
Great, is there a requisition in there for outview? Is that the totals you just read off? Or is there another requisition?
We got a dozen around here.
That would be, uh, yeah, availability of funds, obviously.
Right, yeah.
Just making sure it's in there.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Uh, item L. Consideration for approval and adoption, the sex reading, budget amendment number eleven. Motion on that? Item G. Consideration for approval, first reading, budget number number twelve. Motion on that?
Motion.
Make a motion.
Well, that needs to have a flesh amendment, number twelve, seduce reading, number twelve. It doesn't have a, then. It just says consideration approval on the first reading of number twelve.
First reading and adoption, because it's an emergency.
Sure word adoption, right?
Is there a right approval?
It's an emergency, yeah.
What do you say that means?
Consideration approval for the adoption.
First option.
First reading.
First reading.
Number twelve. You got a motion. Second.
Yeah, Dale's making some.
All the favor. Uh, uh, I'd have a motion carried. Item H. Consideration and approval of paid south water, outview waterline project number eight. At the amount of three hundred five thousand, one hundred thirty one dollars and seventy seven cents, when the funds come available. Take a turn, a motion.
Motion. Second.
All the favor. Uh, uh, I'd have a motion carried. Uh, item I. I think we need to, you put the judge, please, Adam. Please proceed for adoption and growths. Right. Item J. Consideration and approval of paid City of Jackson, at the amount of sixty five hundred dollars. For a two thousand twelve Dodge Charger, out of ABC fund. Motion. Second. All the favor. I, I, I'd have a motion carried. Uh, item K. Consideration, resolution concerning the occupation, when they promptly see for acts of voluntary disclosure. I think before we take any action on that, we need to know what's, what's the cause, the ace of the cause, and the penalties. Couple weeks, act on that. Item L.
Are, are you just not addressing it, or are you voting to table it, or?
We're voting to table it.
You, you do have a back motion in the vote, I'm gonna have to take it.
Take a turn, a motion to table this.
Motion. Second.
Here we find out exactly what the cause of the penalties to the county will be.
Project, go back and do that on item L two, at the end of the agenda.
The motion.
Right on.
Second. All the favor. I, I, I'd have a motion carried.
You do item L like that too, uh, Mr. Miller?
I think that's appropriate, if you're not gonna address it, we don't have to take it.
Okay. Item, let's go, item L. Item L. Open table that, consideration. Take a turn, a motion. Hold it. Your second. Item L. Here we're gonna back up, table it, item L, and also item I.
Is that within this case?
I didn't think it was in the case.
You approved chief, but I.
Second. All the favor. Uh, I'm having a motion carried. Item L. Uh, we've been, uh, we've made, uh, sure, anything that's. We got, are we past that?
You didn't do a motion.
Okay. Uh, considerate, consider a motion, table item I.
Motion.
Second. All the favor. Uh, uh, I'd have a motion carried. Okay. We table item L too?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, item L. Consideration of resolution classifying certain positions of county personnel pursuant to K R S six eight point zero zero five. Ready, you can us elaborate on that. Item L.
Well, I believe pursuant to that statute, there is a, a, you need to do some classifications, personnel code, uh. I know previously in the past, they were in the administrative code, but they're not there now. I think that might have been years ago, but I do remember a classification of when someone was hired at pay rates, and how they can earn raises and things along those lines. And pursuant to the sixty eight oh five, I'd have to look that up and make sure, but I think you guys probably need to look at doing that and propose it and, and make it part of the administrative code sometime in the future.
Is that something you put together for them?
Probably just imagined to do, I mean, I could look over it, but that's something I think that you probably need to do in the future. It's, uh, I think it is meant that by statute, I can't comment on that, uh, from the, right now, because I have a book of the statute on that side, I apologize, but I, I think that's something we did need to agree. They should go forward, you know, if it's part of the administrative code, of course, write down June is the time to amend that, uh, and that's probably not gonna happen at this point in time, so go forward in order to amend the ordinance at any time, we have, um, well, a couple times on it, but it's really, June's the time to address it, so it's not gonna be there now, it's something you guys need to address in the future.
I didn't take a motion to table this, item.
Motion. Second.
All the favor. Uh, uh, I'd have a motion carried. Item, item M. Consideration and approval of paid J A G specialty contractors in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for straight range road. Should state Elbridge Road and Warshaw Road. Motion. I think John Lester had his, uh, before he left office, he had this done, which, this, I thought it was already paid, but it didn't stop being.
No, I was talking about, it wasn't, it was paid.
Okay. Second. All the favor. Uh, uh, I'd have a motion carried. Candidate department updates, but sure, present some. All right, see you. You all good? Okay. All right, I'm gonna get.
I'd like to make a motion if we, uh, give a mortgage for it, or?
Okay, yeah. Uh, Dale's making a motion, the amount of twenty five hundred dollars.
Twenty five hundred dollars, we got that for each one of them.
Okay.
I second that, obviously, but twenty five later.
I second that.
So you're just gonna hurt us right now, right?
Twenty five.
All the favor.
I.
I. I'd have a motion carried.
Twenty five hundred.
Right, yes. Anybody else got anything?
Yep, Jonathan Fields has got something, let her go first.
No. It's a dump, it's a dump where it can start, that just goes back, and it started with that, you. That's my husband's family cemetery, up there, we built a shed and shelter. And the dream that was, is my understanding, that all this grass is supposed to be cut from the cemetery fence, all the way down to the main road, around, keep it cut. It's not being done, and then, uh, Jason, when he was in here, he sent a doctor up, he cleaned it all up, and they cut the grass. But I had to point it out. Then John Lester came over, then he was coming back, asked, what are you doing? You're viewing tree tops, there's no grass, the trees just grow back up, you got all the money on the hill on that side. Well, we sent a doctor up, I don't know what that's costing, but it cost a lot of money, send it over, it's cleaned up. And the grass is not being cut for sure. I used to pick up all the garbage, we could even have the county that's in the tractor, uh, to multi-site the road, he would take his tractor and help, well, he's no longer here, but he can't help. Well, uh, Jason and John Lester, they give me garbage bags, and I picked up the garbage, I don't know who's supposed to be picking it up, but I know it wasn't me, but the doctors taught me from collecting it, and he said I wasn't spending over in morning, this stuff up. And it's hard for me to get it out of hands, well, the grass is starting picking up the garbage, and, uh, he's been going in front for the garbage cans, that around the side. And that's not his job, his job is eating cemetery plant. Well, the building, they do so much damage to it, they have to block out, they have to stand, roll the eggs off, burn them, they build campars in it. They just ain't thought of nothing else, I guess, but I've been paying for that out of my pocket, to heat it fixed. And most people, thanks to county, built that, that was there before the elk, he was ever there, and we have church once a year. But I'm to inform you, we're not gonna pick up the garbage anymore, and we're not gonna cut the grass around to there. I don't know, if it was contracted out, the contractors were not doing their job, and they shouldn't be paid for doing the job that they're not doing. I know there was women that coming down at work, and they don't do the job, I don't even know if they was, and then there was a bunch of men come. And the third bunch, they cut a three foot strip around the walking path, that's all they done. And right now, I wouldn't wanna walk around it, who you gonna attract, you get notorious sometimes, who you gonna attract other, it's a snake thing. I wouldn't wanna ra, walk around it. If you're not snakes.
Did you contact Judge Noble?
I'm gonna be at the six thirty or eight or six o'clock meeting, so I want, I didn't know about this thing. Now, my name's on the agenda, nerd, but they went here again. But, uh, I know Jason, when he was in, he had a camcrossing thing. To keep the horses out of the parking lot, 'cause you're walking the horse, nerd. Well, it did get put in then, but Dale, Smitty, he put it in, but they didn't fix the fence right, and the horses were going around it. And going still in the parking lot, not as bad, but still, it's just a big problem. And, uh, I, I don't know what you're trying to track, you're spending all this money, but the waterline up there. Who you gonna track for weeds and smackdown, and we can go ahead and address the horse house too, while I'm at it. Uh, these horses in the fall of here, these people bringing them up there, they're starving and leaving, they come down beside the road, they take this grass beside their own. Or do they wind up in my yard, my brother's yard, my mom's yard? And if I can show the horse, manure up, take it, put it in the owner's yard, and then in the spring, they can mow their grass, and let that fan up in their place, I don't think they'd appreciate it. And I don't appreciate the horses coming in my yard and eating, and messing all over the place, remember, the owners should be put in jail for sparring their animals. I love animals, I've got six dogs and three cats that people throw out, and I believe them. But I think people ought to take care of their own animals, and yes, I love to go over and see them, some of them is really pretty, but then some of them need a vet here, without letting that chat. And you can go around through there and see them, and most of them are pretty horses right now, because they got so deep. And a stranger paid me five hundred dollars three year ago, to feed the horses, and I bought a huge amount of feed, I stored it in my garage, I went three days a week, fed new horses, I had a place to feed them. I bought salt and mineral blocks for the horses that wasn't mine. I had a friend come down from Indiana, he brought a pan of food for these horses, but they're not their horses, these horses need to be taken care of, and then they pop that up. Refuge for the horses, supposed to be fenced in, they're supposed to have a vet take care of them, I didn't see none of this happening, I didn't see nothing, and when we signed the paper, this out here, big man. They're supposed to be in the yard at the foot of the hill, to keep out the grunts and the people that's vandalizing stuff, and I have never seen a guard up there. And if you gonna build a cabin, I can tell you right now, you're wasting your money and time, because they will burn it down. My brother had a cabin up there, it lasted fifty years, he got burned down, well, they put a trailer at the foot of the hill where you go up, it lasted a year, he got burned down, you can't have nothing to burn, just you got a guard there, somebody to watch you, somebody to take care of you. And you do need somebody up there to pick up garbage and take care of it, or whatever, they don't need to put nothing up there. Uh, they should normally have somebody to take care of it. And, and it gets really aggravating, when I go over, there's garbage thrown everywhere, that's why I get it up, well, I'm not able anymore to do it. And like I said, Frank was doing it, and I, he said he got, or done giving garbage bags.
What, what, is somebody issue about the garbage bags?
Yes, couldn't give garbage bags, well, everybody, I bought them for like, a year or two, and then I come down here, and they give me garbage bags, but they give me a case, at first, they give me like, five or six bags. A lot of them, they, maybe eight garbage cans up there, and that's another thing, you can't hardly keep a decent garbage can up there, and you burn garbage cans, all of them, you cannot open them up, you have to put your hand in there and push a lever to raise it up. And with my, for God's sake, now I can't hardly open them myself, and I hear the other people say, I can't open the garbage cans, I bought garbage cans and put them in, they keep stealing them. And last time, I got one that hooked the lid, but the can's still there, the barrel attached to the metal post, they left it this time.
Calvin, would you help her get garbage bags or a can or something, she could, or somebody could pick up the trash?
Well, I don't have any cans, but I do, I can provide her with garbage bags, yeah, just, uh...
Well, like I said, I can't do any more than Frank was doing it.
Frank could talk to me about that, I think we talked to Judge, but I don't think Judge would give him garbage bags right there.
But I guess.
That's the least thing we do is provide garbage bags.
I'll be happy to provide, anybody that would change the garbage, I'll be happy to provide garbage bags.
He's, he's only elected to help you this, this year. Nothing else up there unless they have a horse show, or something, we're working on it a little bit, but it is beautiful up there, I agree with you.
Like I said, we're not gonna pick the garbage up, I'm informing you now, I'm gonna inform him, we're not picking up the garbage anymore. We will clean it up right for church, which is done past this year. And the weeds has fell over in the walking paths, you got a path about this wide, and it could be a rare snake over it, you can't do that. And then, that's not drawing tourists, that is not gonna draw anybody here, they come one time, they'll never come back, they'll say, I'll never go back there. That ain't what it's supposed to be.
Most of your road will get used, you can probably do.
Well, I even had to take petition up, get the road fixed, it's been a long many years back, cause from my brother's house, six miles from there up to the, they had the U R in, there was all blacktop was busted in normal. And I went to one of the tourism meetings, that's where we need to take petition up, well, I, I wrote part, three things. I got over six thousand signatures, I had to take it to the, not county, cross plate, to give it to the lady, and, and they had the vote of it. And I told her, I said, I can't go to the meeting, but I wanted our votes against it, cause I will not be, they will not get my vote. But they all voted for it, they come up and blacktop it, but if they don't keep the ditches cleaned, they'll, uh, what's good of being putting blacktop down, it's gonna burn, it's gonna freeze, bust, bust out, and, uh.
We voted to, uh, put in a road plan, get a road plan, uh, basically from July first, it was a judge's apartment, I don't know.
Well, you got a big lovely hill, I mean, it's awful, and there's a lot of people crossing that hill. And he really needs blacktop, I mean, and you can't grade it, I mean, the grass is done gongs, and when you try to grade it, you're getting rocks. I mean, and the people come that direction, and it's, I went through their blacktop, and I've got four wheel drive, and they was one place, the guys almost ran down through, I don't even know what.
They worked on it just then, it was a bad shit.
It has, but it's still, it did, it's blacktop, I mean, it don't get. And there'd be more people come that way if it was blacktop. And I don't have any miles it was, sir, for a long time I called them, almost every day, but the county owned so many miles, and the state owned so many miles, and I caused much, that the state turned their part over to the county, so all the big lucky hill is county out, and, uh, and it's, very little is done to their road. But if we're gonna attract tourism, we're gonna have to have something to draw people here, and if we drawing them with this, they're pitiful shape. Like I said, I wouldn't wanna go, I wouldn't want to. But, uh.
If we get the road plan started the first of July, uh, maybe work, you know, two weeks in this issue, two weeks in that issue, give it a go. And he'll say, he might say that Riz, he can't do this or that, he's not got a road supervisor, but.
Like I said, I'm gonna repeat everything at six thirty or whatever maintenance, I didn't know about this one until somebody called me this morning. I don't have a computer, I don't have the cell phones, I don't have nothing, and she says, she's gonna come with me six, and she come, she come this morning, come changed into this morning, I saw, I saw, but then I seen the page out here on the door, since, I think, six or six thirty. So there will be two meetings today, which I think is ridiculous too, I think people should be, sit down and work things out. My view may not be like yours, but it should be a compromise there, where you can work something out and get something done, the way it is, this is going this way, this and this way, and then they're getting nothing done.
Believe me, we're right.
It is.
It's like Brendan said, the one meeting, the, the statute says, I mean, this, this, we can take it away at ten o'clock.
I know, I used to come to the meetings long time ago, and they was in the evening, and I could come in, and they switched it to ten o'clock, but I was working, I couldn't come in, which for a working person, the evening is better, but for other people, it may not be. And I've not been coming to the meetings, I've got other stuff that I have to do, but I'm at the point, I'm gonna be here for both meetings.
Judge feels it's necessary to change the time, he needs to change it promptly, probably get a vote, and go from there. That's our, that's our, that's all we're trying to do.
Well, like I said, I, I, both meetings, since I found out about this one, I wanted to be at both of them, but I will be back at six or six thirty, whatever time it was, and I am on theirs because I promised them, put my name on there.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I think that it's very unfortunate, and I'm just saying this generally to the fiscal court, I'm not really interested to agree, that the community is put in the spot of feeling like they're taking sides, you know what I mean? Cause that's not the way it should be, I mean, uh, we should be working together, and I don't understand, Brendan, why you aren't getting the respect, in my opinion, opinion, because you as the cap, as the county attorney, if you say to everybody, this is, you're legal, to me, that should be enough, I don't understand it. And I.
Yes.
Right.
But it is even fucking right.
And like Phyllis said, um, I, I'm one of those that for a long time thought, we can work this out, we can work this out. But sadly, sadly to say that I think it's gonna take at this point, going to court. I know that, I know, and so we, we need to do that to get on with, with the county, and I feel, I sense it, like what you said, Ray, I sense it that for you guys, it's uncomfortable too, because you've been here so long, and you've never had these kind of, kind of problems, but, you know, anyway, I know you tried, Brendan, and we just, I guess we're gonna have to get it in, into court, but anyway, that's.
Let me just remember, I work with, I work with both sides.
I know that, I know that. Well, it shouldn't even be both sides, you work with the court, and it should be, right? I know that, I know that, and I, I know that, but you stated what your opinion is, right? So, anyway, that's just a general statement, but you go forward.
I see you're finding there are a lot of people who really, really care.
Right, right.
We love you guys, we really wanna, you know, we're not here to.
And we love Judge, we love Judge.
We're not here to, we're just here to support, you know what I mean?
Seriously, I've, I've, you know, it's, it's just, we gotta get on with it, but if it has to be done legally, then it has to be done legally, you know?
I can see your issues pretty easily, we're, we're saying anything together.
It's sad, we had, we had goals that led.
But anything that could change your life, I don't care if you change your heart goes to stop toes, there are our problems. And that's the biggest thing, is once you're gonna work out things a lot smooth, and I think, I think, I think things will be okay. It's just, you, you gotta realize that you cannot let one person be king, we only got one king, rest of us servants, so.
Uh, that's, that's why, that's why they say.
But you've got the attitude, it's my way or no way, it's hard for anybody to go along with you, and I think we, we have that problem.
I'll just tell you, from an employee's standpoint, it's created a very toxic work environment. I mean, all the employees, our morale is at a all-time low, you know, we're, we're afraid to do our jobs, because if we do our jobs, we get angry texts at, at eleven o'clock at night, or seven o'clock on a Saturday morning, you know, I mean, it's just.
I understand that, but I have paid taxes since nineteen seventy-nine on place. Obviously, one truckload of gravel and two pipes. I pay close to a thousand dollars a year on my property taxes, I get nothing from the county, other than the roadway that they took through my property. And to me, that is very serious, and when I ask for some help, when I don't get it, I'm, uh, believe if the quick collective property taxes, it lets you take care of your own property, they would be a lot of, it's a lot heavier, that's the biggest deal.
I agree with you.
I gotta have, I gotta pay house insurance, and if I had a decent road to my house, I pay more house insurance than probably anyone on Lakeside, I live five miles from Jackson. Eighteen hundred ninety dollars for a farm area, I'll tell you what I pay for, every year, across where I live. But I'm home, and that's the biggest problem of people, they don't realize, just like her, she's home on South Fork where she's at, at the U, and that's where she wants to be, so that's the reason why that I take more party in, what we're done in the county than I did years ago, cause I hadn't, no idea how the policies went. But I've noticed here lately that you wanna be a ruler, now, being a ruler is rough, and our country is sort of, we are adopting stuff right now that's made a big change in the last ten years, that a lot of people, it's about harm to the country out there. But I, I mean, I love everybody, I, I don't have no, no enemies, and don't want to. But I understand your point.
Yeah, and I, I'm speaking as a citizen at this point, not an employee, you know, this is our ten o'clock meeting, it's done been established that this is a regular meeting, it's in the admin code. I see the judge's vehicle sitting right out here, you've got the judge, we've got a fiscal court sitting here, you've got a judge on the other side of the wall that won't come out and address my issues or your all's issues as citizens? Something is gonna have to change, I mean, I've been quiet for six months and let things go to hell here with this county, that I'm a citizen of, not just an employee, that I've done my best for fifteen years, and in the last six months, somebody has come in here, like I said, they're sitting on the other side of that door, and they won't even come out here and face us. He sends me an angry text this morning to come in his office and bring all my paperwork, and I told him I'm working on it, then he says, don't even come over here, you just stay in your office and get it done until I tell you otherwise. I'm not even supposed to be at the meeting, but I'm a county mediocre, so, you know, he won't, I mean, have to work with somebody that won't work with you as a citizen, and I hope he hears me on the other side of that door, and him and his private attorney should come out here and address this public, y'all have taken time to be here, six thirty's not the meeting. The admin code, he always says, check the admin code, I got my admin code out before I come over here, and I took a picture if anybody like to see it. The admin code says the meetings are at ten A M. on the fourth Tuesday, not six thirty. So here, I'm not even getting paid, but I've gotta be back here at six thirty to film a meeting where I know the magistrates ain't gonna be here, and I don't blame them, they're here now. You know, it's just ridiculous, and I'm sorry, that's all I've got to say, you know, it's just the point that it's past ridiculous.
Unless you were going to me and offend you, you know?
Oh, you're not offending me, I believe you, something needs to be done, but, you know, I see the three magistrates here on time, I don't see the fourth magistrate, I don't see the judge.
That's the problem, mine, the one that I vote for is not here.
Yeah, well, I didn't vote for him, I'm, but he's not here, regardless, he has my respect, provided, he provides the same respect.
I ought to reword that, my magistrate in my district is not here, I never said, I should.
My magistrate is, I'm proud to say it, but I mean, you know, just as, as a citizen, and even as an employee, a lot of employees won't say anything, but we don't know what to do, we don't know which way to turn, and that is not a, a nice place to work, and I'm just, that's the way it is.
I went to sister there, some Calvin that I wish I didn't have, have to, but I did, I mean, Chrisler has been a county employee for this county for seventeen years, I mean, and she's recently saved this county, I don't know how much money, that we were supposed to owe, uh, and, and I don't understand all that, I really don't.
Three hundred nineteen thousand dollars, and then he gets rid of that.
Yeah.
I mean, locks her out of the office, but simply cause she done her job, I don't understand it, I'm like you, I wish he would, he would come out here and, and tell us.
I think we oughta lock the door, I mean, he's right over there. I'm sorry, I'm just, I mean, I'm fed up, and after this morning, the, the angry text at eight o'clock, eight oh three this morning, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm doing my job, do you all want me to video the meeting or not, that's as clear as I can put it, then I'll video the meetings, and I'll put them on the Facebook page for the public to see.
I don't need to see them, they can't get them late, they need to see.
So like I said, what are we having at six thirty, is it a meeting? I mean, is it a meeting? I mean, I ain't trying to put you on the spot, but I mean, seriously.
The general issue by the judge, and he, he issued an executive order that, that he was gonna move the hearing, the time until six thirty.
But have we moved it, we're here, you know, to me, it looks like we're having it.
I issued what I said earlier, that basically under the administrative code, until there is a statute that allows the judge to set the hearing, uh, to set the regular meeting thing, but not to change the time.
Is the.
And that, and that's what's happening, and that's what.
Is there any reason for the public to come out tonight at six thirty when you're gonna have one judge and what, you're not gonna even have a full forum?
I'll leave that to the public to decide.
They, the point is that they're trying to, now, that a lot of the working people can't come, but what about the ones that work at nine?
Sure, well, we've.
I mean, they have two shifts, most of the time, so the people that work in the night is gonna miss the meeting.
And, and I.
You know what I'm saying, it goes one way, then it goes the other way.
Well, that's the whole reason to putting it on Facebook, so the people that can't come can see it, but I've noticed we've had public forums in the evenings, and we've had a couple meetings in the evenings, and the same people that come during the day are the same ones that come during the night. I've seen very few different faces between either meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's our argument, he wants.
I don't know, it's a long, I'm.
And that's an argument to make, you know, regular meeting, right?
Yeah, but really and truly, is that, is that, does that hold water?
I've, I've said enough, but as an employee, I'm asking you all as a court, we just, we need to do something, and the public. I mean, this is a toxic work environment, that's the bottom line, I have never worked someplace for the past six months that I've ever, ever worked in my life that's been this crazy, I mean, I'm, it is what it is.
I can say one thing, we sat down several occasions with Mr. Noble, and the last time too, we thought he was all done, we thought he was gonna be okay. We went to Frank for trying to get money for the tourism, Sandy Donut told us, you, all you guys need to come, we traveled up there and sucked it up, sitting on the same side of the table, that was on the twelfth, well, we didn't know it till Monday morning, and he'd already give us, had us a big thank you letter on the tenth, ready to give us that Monday morning, and he want us to go burn, make him look good, I guess, I don't know, but it's. You cannot talk to him, I have nothing against Jeff, Jeff, we know Jeff's a boss, but you gotta sit down, you gotta work together. If you can't work together, I don't know, just don't leave the.
Does the second order, Brendan, usually like, it's usually a mercy, a second order?
No, I can be, that can be. Well, you can see, just looking at that from what the, what the president, the second order, and they can be issued by, by Brendan, just the issue is within the executive authority to do that.
Man, we'd love to work together, it's not us, and everything we've done, everything we've done, we've tried to go by the K R S, we, we tried to do everything right.
I see three magistrates, closed doors, what I see standing here from a citizen's standpoint.
We, here, we're at the end of the fiscal year, most, and I figured, and I've been part of this, this time of year, pretty late, pretty, you know, you kinda paid the bills, but this year, we, we managed pretty good, here it is, uh, the end of the fiscal year is coming to an end, we're gonna have another year's fiscal year starting July first, which will have some money from the D O G. coming in. I mean, we were doing good, I mean, we're not doing fabulous, but we're doing good.
Yeah, we got, as of right now, I think that's making one, one point three million dollars as of today in the road fund, we got money. It ain't like we broke, I mean, the jail, that hurts our gentle fund stuff tremendously, but we got money in the road fund, we can work with the road fund stuff.
I'll commend Joe Grobs, he is really trying to save money, a transport bridge, he is, he's really is, he's gonna break that, in my opinion.
And all you, all you can is, uh, jail can break the county in a heartbeat, I'm telling you.
A jail can break the county in a heartbeat, and I think we got some good things to look at, you know, to look forward to, if we just get over the hump.
You know, we love, we have confidence in you guys, I don't know, I could be back and meet with everybody, and try to talk it out, but, you know, I don't know, I don't want to do.
Well, that's what I thought when Calvin said, let's lock on the door, I thought, you know, if we thought that was the right, that it would work, we'd be the first. I thought, you know, if we thought that was the right, that it would work, we'd be the first ones to door. You know what I'm saying? To say, let's talk. You know what I mean?
But it's going the other way. You guys, I don't know. You know, like, man, it goes further. But we, all we want is what's right. We, we not asking for nothing. We ain't asking for nothing. Right as you go, we just want it, want it done right.
And we don't want to do that because these attorneys are getting ridiculous. We've already been at about five thousand dollars for, for nine, ten, three months. Should have been I can sit down and work on it. And this is going to be our first.
And I'll just like, I don't like the things that I do. Attorney now.
So I'm talking to the same one.
I do not like the things that we try to.
So he, he's back.
He is. He's worked very hard on that.
I know.
Both sides. He's still not getting the work.
I want to, I had a question from the newspaper standpoint that Brendan said earlier. Uh, I could say in the past, when we were the legal paper, uh, fiscal court chose to use both those in the past. I didn't have a problem with that, even though we're the legal paper. The city does it right now. Um, and I want to ask you guys, if you would, to consider writing both newspapers to, uh, to have their advertisements for the county. And October rolls around and I'm the legal paper again, I don't, I mean, I don't want to come in here and object to them running either.
What we, what we trying to do, that's just like your parcs houses and stuff. You have to fit the kitchen.
Well, I mean.
You ought to have to go to work too.
Yeah, well, you can't.
That's a problem.
But I would ask you guys, if you make an motion or something to do that. And if y'all choose to do that, that's fine. It's fine too. I just wanted to pose that to you.
I've got no problem.
I've got no problem.
Right there.
Tony and Jeff had no problem with it a few months ago. I mean, uh, he called me over here and called me in there and said he was running the both papers.
Do you need that motion?
Yeah, I'd have that.
I'm ready.
Both papers.
Both papers for.
I'm saying, if you're paying a motion, do you both papers for this court advertising?
Right.
I'll say, all the papers. Uh, uh, thank you. I've had a vote to carry.
Was all the fiscal board have done?
Anybody else? Anything to say? I guess I'll entertain a vote for a jury. I'll say that all the papers. Uh, I've had a vote to carry, meet the jury. Thank you guys, gentlemen. Deal.